I guess 4:29, I'm counting.
We're trying to kind of fix the clock with the pulse.
Looks like it'll be right on when that second name sweeps up to the top.
Yeah.
What's that?
You need a church there to sit in first in the back room?
Always, right here.
They send the go.
I can get out of here then if I need to.
The time is 4:30 PM. The Pelican Rapid City Council Meeting of 29 March 2022 is called to order. I'd ask those in our chamber this evening, if you have not signed in, please sign in on the clipboard by the back door. And also, everyone, please put their phones on vibrate. We'll call a member. Daniel?
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markram.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster and Mayor Brent Cracher.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those that are in the council chamber, also those that are joining us via Zoom technology. And remember, our city council meeting was shown on Channel 2 on Wednesday evenings. Just a few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, March 30th, 10:00 to 11:00 AM, is conversations with the mayor of historic City Hall. April 7th, at 2:00 PM, is our County Board of Review and Equalization meeting here at City Hall. And then also, let's say, the April 7th is the Otter Tail County Housing Summit at Duffer Pond. And our next city council meeting is slated for Tuesday, April 12th, 4:30 PM, at the City Council chair. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, we all please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, citizens' comments. Item, agenda item number two, citizens' comments. Do you have any citizens' comments? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to item number three, additions and allegiance to the agenda. I have one addition. Let's make that item number 16. It's northwest land zoning. Item number 16 is northwest land zoning. Any other additions or deletions? Move to approve the addition.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent, agenda which I agree. Item four A is approval of council minutes from March 8, 2022. Item four B is approved of the council's capable listing. Item four C one is liquor store report, which is in your packet. Item number four C two is utility report, which is in the packet. Item four D is certified for property taxes at property 115 Southeast First Street. For water and sewer as well, to $262.72. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second. Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number five is colony apartment assignment of tax abatement and financial assistance agreement. And H U V amendment, uh, that was in our packet, didn't... Skip is joining us this evening, right?
Yeah, Skip is online, um, he's on Zoom. Skip, are you, can you hear us? Sound muted.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Um, I can, I can start by, by just kind of explaining a little bit, uh, from what I know of this, Skip, but you may want to chime in and kind of, uh, explain in more detail. But in your packet, there was an assignment for tax abatement. There was a copy of the original developer agreement, and then there was also one that's, uh, titled, Assignment of Tax Abatement and Financial Assistance Agreement. And, uh, and then the third one was a HUD amendment to the original developer agreement. And, um, Skip, uh, Skip, correct me if I'm wrong, but that first one, Assignment of the Tax Abatement and Financial Assistance, is basically just D W Jones reassigning the note receipts, or reassigning the note to the lender that you're trying to seek financial refinancing with. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So that's basically the first one. The second one, the HUD amendment to the original developer agreement, is basically the city agreeing to the first, the first document, which is allowing, uh, or agreeing to the reassignment that you want to do. That's correct also, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's the first one.
So the first one, Skip, just signed. The second one, the city, uh, also signs off on. But Skip, would you kind of explain to the council a little bit, um, what you're trying to do and what these documents are all about?
Sure. Well, part of our plan with this market rate housing was that we got a temporary, um, debt on the property with the intent of that at some time, once it will stabilize and occupy, that we would refinance the property. And what that does is that gives us a long-term fixed-rate financing. Excuse me. A lot of people think, okay, you hear the word HUD, okay, now is it an affordable housing project? No. HUD has long guaranteed programs that allow us to take a market rate project that continues to be market rate, just like it is now and always will be. It just allows us to interest rate lock the rate for 35 years, which we can't do conventionally. And, um, so it takes all the interest rate risk out, uh, for us, out of the project for here and forever. We don't ever have to worry about it. I wish we could have got this done a little bit sooner before rates started going up, but we still got the rate locked, um, uh, before this last little bump in rates that had come about in the last couple of weeks. But it's just allowing us to keep the project there and be very financially feasible for the long term.
Just for the council's information also, I did send these documents over to Pammy Armidall, at Northside Security, our financial advisor. I also sent them to Steve Rochell, our bond counsel, uh, at Kuitach Rock. They reviewed them, and then I have, I had a conference call with the two of them, and they basically, um, said that after reviewing the documents, they're familiar with this process and these documents, and they said, these are routine. Uh, they don't have any, uh, concerns about the city approving these documents or anything like that. So their recommendation in mind, if you have any questions, obviously ask them. Their recommendation in mind is to go ahead and approve, uh, the signing of the documents of the city. There's no cost for the city. No cost for the city, and that's kind of what Steve Rochell looked at was to see if there was anything in these documents that would create any concerns for the city, and he said, there aren't. These are just pretty much kind of border play standard procedure.
Can they just be covered in one motion?
Well, we're only going to be signing one of them, but I guess, uh, maybe that's a Skip question. If you think that, that, uh, your, your lender would want to see separate motions on the two or just one motion, what are your feelings on that, Skip?
I think one is fine, especially since the city has only signed it one.
Okay.
But that document is referencing the other one, so.
Correct. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think if the motion just includes, you know, that they're okay with both of the documents, that would be more than fine.
And then, um, in the motion approving the signatures, the city signatures on the HUD amendment document to the original, but that's the one we're going to be signing, correct?
Correct.
What do you approve? This document that you're on the street? Well, it's this one here, but it's basically, it's named the same thing as the original one. But this is the HUD amendment, so I would just reference the HUD amendment to the tax abatement. I would approve the tax abatement and financial assistance agreement with colony apartments as well as the HUD amendment.
Oh, second half. Can we have a motion in a second? Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Thank you, Skip.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very pleased.
Come on. Okay, we'll move on to item number six is award project 93. We have Bob Freeman here from Apex Center hearing. And this is Doc, Doc was in our packet this evening.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, council staff, um, here tonight to just give an update as far as where we're at with the utility extensions to the new Otter Tail County Truck Garage up on 430th Street. So we did take construction bids on Wednesday, March 16th. In your packet is an actual bid tabulation. We received three bids. They were all very close. Uh, the low bid was submitted by J&amp;J Excavating out of Staples in the amount of $222,416. The other two bids that we received, one was from Howig Incorporated out of Detroit Lakes, Minnesota, and then the other one was, uh, Celine Brothers out of Holly. Those were both $226,000 and change. So if you look at that, they were all very close. You have 45 days to award a construction contract for this work. The estimated overall project budget as a result of the low bid is right around $291,000. That includes construction, professional services, as well as a contingency factor on top of that. I guess if, what I'm asking for this evening is if the city is, is okay with the, the, uh, low bid that was received, if the city is comfortable with the project budget that I, I asked for a motion to actually move ahead with awarding a construction contract to J&amp;J Excavating. Um, as you recalled on past, in, during past conversations, this project is being paid for by Otter Tail County. So the contract is being held and administered by the city. However, the city is going to reimburse for all the costs related to this project from Otter Tail County. So, um, anticipated schedule at this time, if we can get authorization to award a construction contract this evening, we'll go ahead and execute those contracts. And then sometime this summer, obviously, construction is anticipated to take place, so. Any questions on, on that issue or matter?
How can the price be like a few dollars higher? Do they work with the same people?
You know, yeah, yeah, I mean, they, they can. A lot of their suppliers are probably the same. Uh, are they usually this close? No, they're not. I would say this is, this was pretty close. We've had some other ones that, and on larger projects, I'm talking multimillion dollar projects that have been even closer, surprisingly close. And usually, that's just two. In this case, for these three to be that close, even especially the second and third bidder, uh, the second bidder was Celine Brothers, and that was $226,155. The third bidder was Howig, $226,411. So it's, or $226,411, so very close.
Have you worked with J&amp;J?
Yep, we have. Yep, we've done a lot of work with J&amp;J that are more than capable of completing the work. They're a little bit smaller contractor, so this type of project actually fits them very well. Yep. Good questions. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
How will we go ahead and award the contract to J&amp;J Construction?
Second. We have a motion in a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on down to item number 16, uh, while we have Bob Freeman here, the northwest land zoning. And Don, do you want to lead that discussion?
Yeah, uh, just for starters, what's up on the screen here is the zoning that was presented to the council based on the work that the planning commission did with West End Initiative, um, for kind of, you know, their recommendation for the zoning up in the northwest area. And you notice, um, especially down here by the road, uh, on 108 West, we have R2, which is single family homes up to a part of the buildings. But right along the road, we have a commercial, uh, for that first, you know, the couple hundred feet or whatever. And so, uh, I'll let Bob basically explain why we ended up having this to do. I had the agenda to have a discussion with council.
Yeah, so we've been working, uh, or having correspondence back and forth with the, the party that's interested in doing some work up here. And one concern that they had was the recommendation, I don't know if it's official at this time or not, Don, but the, the discussions are, are basically recommendations of zoning that commercial. And my discussions with them were, is they really, if they're going to move ahead with their efforts to develop this area, they would definitely not like that to be zoned commercial or now or in the future. They said, they had, had different visions for that area rather than commercial. So what I'm here to, this evening to ask is, is before that particular individual spends any more time and effort on this area, they just wanted some assurance that the city is not set in stone in zoning that commercial. And actually, their thoughts are that they would definitely not like that zoned commercial. Just wanted some feedback from you folks on that matter before, again, that they're committing to, to move ahead with any time and effort on this project.
Yeah, and again, with Bob's sake, this, this hasn't been set, I mean, it was a recommendation. You guys accepted this document, but there's no official zoning in putting in place. I know I looked at the, the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan, which shows up in that area. In fact, I think I can get to it, yeah. The comprehensive plan that's being done, when they got this document, this is what the comprehensive plan showed. And the comprehensive plan basically showed, just shows, um, proposed area to be developed, but, but they left it open enough so that, um, as, as development plans, um, get worked on, there's still a lot of flexibility out there. So even though that's the one that comes out of this in the comprehensive plan, and this is the one that, that basically breaks it down a little bit more detail, it's still conceptual. It's just all depends. This won't be in the comprehensive plan this way, so there won't be an official zoning, um, that's approved based on the update to the comprehensive plan, which is good because that's only, even if it was this, could change depending on what comes forward. So the last, after the last, when the, when the meeting that, that, um, Mr. Redding attended and wanted to get some, um, affirmation that the council was willing to work with him, I'm kind of looking at developing that up there. After that meeting, Bob and I and Mr. Redding had kind of a conversation, and Mr. Redding alluded to the process of, of, of doing a preliminary plat that gets approved by the planning commission and then goes through the final plating process, and it takes months to do that. It's through the timeline in which that process is done. Well, when you start talking about preliminary plaques, that's more dollars because you're actually putting pretty much what the plaque, a draft of the plaque, of what it might look like, once it's recorded and completely done. And so what we talked about was him without spending a ton of money in a pre-plating layout, just doing a concept plan. And so he would come, my thought in talking about him, they would, they would work together to do a concept of how that would be zoned out, how it would be laid out, and come and have that discussion with the city council and get the, yeah, that looks good before we start going through the expense and time of a pre-plating and plating process. So that's kind of why, why we're here today. So, um, you know, if the council has any questions, how do you feel? In some sense, you know, maybe some commercial would be good down there. But when it really comes down to it, if that's a field breaker in getting housing development out there with this developer, then we're back to find, trying to find another developer. If, if we could live with, okay, that commercial corridor is just from that lower area behind it, west of the apartment building out to the, to the dump road, I'm not even sure, dump road, transfer station or whatever. And I'm not even sure that distance, but there's not a whole lot that could go into the commercial anywhere.
Part of that lower area, right?
Yeah, right in this area right here is, because that's where stormwater retention, all the way just about up to that, you know, go back, that, there's that, you can see that paint where you're buying. We're going through to the west of the.
Oh, right here, there.
Yeah, that's about, no, not vertical, right there. That's about how far that west end is developed. That's the area. So. It's substantial. So you could probably fit something commercially in there, but, you know, there's always.
Pretty minimal.
Still commercial development that can happen on the north end here, um, even beyond this, out, uh, you know, in the future, out this way. But, um, I, I guess the, the decision that the council has to try and make to give Mr. Redding some direction is, are you willing to forego commercial here to get housing development in this whole area?
If, if we're not, he's not interested.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that was his concern. I don't want to speak for Mr. Redding, but basically, in our conversations, he indicated that it would definitely be a concern to him if that would be, remain commercial. From my conversations, he kind of envisioned that area as maybe some stormwater retention, a green space, possibly even a park-type area, more of a welcoming type.
Have you talked about that?
Yep, along that front edge of the highway, so.
Something to drive into the housing subject or development that makes me pleasing to the eyes.
Well, I'll speak, I'll say, I'm in favor of changing that to residential or whatever he needs to get this housing project going.
I am also, what about the planning commission? Maybe it's something I'm told to. In a sense, in a sense, what you guys are talking about, because you ultimately are the ones that are going to basically approve class. The planning commission is also reviewing and recommending and everything like that, too. So I think direction from the city council to go forward based on what you guys feel. I think that, I don't know if the planning, Kevin sits on the planning commission, but I, I don't know. I can't speak for him either, but I would like to believe that the planning commission feels more of an urgency for housing than to have a little bit of commercial on one corner of that whole area.
We have a motion.
I didn't make a motion.
We didn't?
No.
Okay, sorry.
I'm still. 60 acres is a big development. I'm still not sold.
Well, we got, this is not part of that, is it?
Well, it is. We're talking about zoning. Is he, is he zoning all of it or rezoning?
Getting rid of the commercial.
I understand that, but we're making a concession for 300 feet on 108 for 60 acres for one developer. What if he comes in here and he makes, he builds three houses and says, yeah, we're, we're, and now we're in the same boat? Or, oh, maybe we should have that, or maybe we want a gas station down there. We're putting all of our eggs for 60 acres in one guy's little pocket, and I'm just, I haven't been sold yet that that's a good plan. I mean, a 30-acre development is a good-sized development.
I agree. I agree with that, but technically, we haven't changed anything. That isn't commercial yet. We haven't said anything. So we can tell them, we'll take a look at what your conceptual plans are, and then we'll design.
And I think that's part of his concern, because if he puts, even, I don't know, you know, there's going to be some cost in putting a conceptual plan together, but even if he does the work and, and worked with Bob and puts money out to do a conceptual plan, and there's just something along here or along here that he does that doesn't affect this area at that time, and then you close the door, you've got to find accurate, some, and he decides not to.
To Kevin's concern, if he builds three houses and leaves, why couldn't we just rezonate that then?
But again, I just, I've been putting a lot of. No, process that you have to go through. We just can't have a meeting and say, we're going to rezonate that because now you do have to go through a plan. There's a, there's a process in place that we've seen by just trying to figure out an ordinance down the road here, that that process can take months. Yeah, and there is no, the zoning, there is zoning up here now that basically was put in place when, when the last con plan or the first con plan was done. It shows something up there. But that's. No, no, there's, there's actual some other zoning up here that applies. In fact, if the, if the planning commission was going to have this zone according to what you see here, there would still have to be rezoning done now because the zoning that's, that is currently up there is close to there, but it's not exactly like this because there's some, there's some industrial. This area right in here, there's some industrial. Uh, this was all rezoned housing when the apartments went up. This is all probably pretty close to being correct. There is no commercial out here at this point. It's, it's all residential, but there is, I think, a little pocket of. Well, that has, the, where the colony apartments is has to be R2. That was rezoned to R2. So those, the zoning where the apartment buildings, the R2 up here and the R2 right here exist, and there, this might be R1. I have to go back and look. But there is industrial that was, I don't think there was ever any industrial zoning over here that was ever changed. And there surely is no commercial. I don't believe up there not. I mean, I guess, I, I agree with Kurt that we, I mean, but this isn't set in stone by any means. I mean, this was just a recommendation that we approved, um, but we didn't rezonate. So it's not zoned as that map is currently saying. I think, I mean, we'd be dumb to, to say, absolutely not, that's going to be commercial. So I mean, he presents his plan and, yeah, sure, and then we go from there. Again, I'm not convinced that one guy should get 60 acres for a buck. If he came in, say that his, he had it all figured out, if his first phase come in, and his first phase was in this area, and it showed however access to the development in this area down here, and it was all whatever housing he tries to put in here, um, and that's the plan to show that, you know, he might be affecting property values, for instance, if there's commercial right here at that time, would you be receptive to the idea? So if that's, if that's his plan, that he's going to do that?
I just feel like the old horse going before the horse at this stage. I mean, we don't, I did miss a couple of council meetings. I don't know if he ever came back and spoke again.
No.
But I've only met the man one time, and I've listened to him for five minutes, and it sounds good. Sure, certainly does. That's all I know.
And he, he definitely wants to put something together for you guys to look at, developing that. He just, I guess, I can't speak for him because he's not here, but I think, I'm guessing his concern is that, that commercial would affect the housing in that area where the commercial is located. The housing value. But, you know, it's not, it's not zoned commercial.
Right. We would have to build zone it commercial. It's not zoned that way. I doubt it would take a test.
Yeah, so maybe, Don, if we can maybe get together here later this week and just figure out exactly what it is zoned, and then I can reach out to Mr. Redding and let him know where we're at and go from there, so. If that's okay with everybody. Okay?
And I think basically, we can't currently not zone it commercial.
Right.
And his concern is that in the future, it could.
Correct. Yep. So, okay. That's all I had.
So you'll, you'll connect with Mr. Redding?
Yep, I will. I'll reach out to him and Don, and I'll get together and figure out exactly what's, how, what this looks like for how it's zoned, and we'll reach out to him and go from there.
I have nothing else. We'll, if he wants to come back and.
Yeah.
To the council and talk to you guys a little bit more while I connect the meeting.
Yep, so, okay.
Any questions for Bob before this?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven is ring all agreement for ambulance service, and that is. Don, you want to talk to that?
Yeah, this is just the, the same agreement that we get, um, pretty much every year. The, that, the, we, uh, per catheter rate did not change. So for all practical purposes, it could be the same as we've, we've seen in the past years. I think the second page actually is the, the agreement itself that shows the 3,800, and that's what we had, um, in our agreement last time. And also, it just needs approval for the city to sign up for the agreement.
We made a motion that we, uh, entered an agreement with Ringell.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Why did the price stay the same?
That's their, their choice. They're the ones who want to have it right. Yeah, that's not how I'm looking.
Maybe it does on average, because Medicare's so wacky. If they get more money, they probably lose money in Medicare. I don't know.
I know when he was here at the council and addressed the council that time, he talked about how, um, retaining staff, attracting staff, because they just can't afford to pay what the bigger cities are paying and everything, and the cost of equipment, medical. supplies is all going up, and I'm kind of surprised it stayed the same, too.
Any more discussion? Discussion. Hearing out all the favors, if you can say aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number eight, which is on our pack of resolution, resolution two two zero two dash zero four, approving supplemental outdoor recreation grant application. Don?
Yep. So, you guys had approved an outdoor recreation grant application submitted for the pool early on, and that application, I believe we had to have the application, drafted the application into the DNR by March tenth, in order for them to do, if we wanted to have them kind of do a review of it and give us any suggestions. The deadline for the applications are March thirty third, so Thursday. So, we had submitted the pool one, and some comments came back. We had another grant writer also review it for us, and there was some just, some more suggestions made. And so, in talking with Amy and Kate regarding the work, the additional time it was going to take to fill in the blanks that they wanted, and actually, in answering one of the questions, it was going to be very difficult, we felt, to answer that question honestly and still feel that we have a good shot at getting the grant. And the question was, if we give you this three hundred thousand dollars, in a nutshell, if we gave you this three hundred thousand dollars, is that the last dollar you need to do your project? And for the pool, that's not true, because we've got two state grants we're trying to get. If we don't get either one of them, we're still in limbo. So, we weren't sure how to answer that question, and I talked to the DNR, the people that reviewed it, that said anything about it a little bit, and they were concerned about how we would answer that question, too. So, anyway, but there was all, all kinds of other things that had to be done, and Amy and Kate just were kind of at a loss for why, why do we want to spend a ton more time on this for the pool when the probability of us getting this grant is not that great? Plus, if we do get it and we don't get one of the other ones, we're still in limbo. So, for that reason, they decided not to continue on with this grant application for the three hundred thousand. And so, I decided that I'll start looking at writing the grant and getting something submitted for the bridge, and the dam comes out. Even though that's on the bonding request, it's on the, the house's capital bonding list, but it's not on the governor. I don't know what that means. The pool's on both, but the, but the bridge is not. I don't know that. But, anyway, so I thought I could start looking at writing this grant application for the bridge. So, in order to do that, I need this resolution. Having said that, there's a lot of work to it. I also needed to have the budget for the bridge revised because of some things that we've now learned that can be included in the DNR, designing of the bridge, the abutments and stuff, as, as part of the storing up of the, of the, of the dam wall, when the dam comes out, that type of thing, for the shoreline. And so, they had to redo some budgets. So, I didn't know, looking at the application and starting the grant, whether I was going to be able to get, because I just had the conversation with Kate and Amy last week. Those kids need a week to get this thing done. There's a lot to it. So, I reached out to Houston Engineering about the, the need for a revised budget to put this thing together, and they actually were taking a look at the application, because I had started working on some of this stuff. And I sent them what I had, and they actually got a hold of me, and they said, we will write the grant application for you, Paul, and try and get something done by next week. We're not convinced we're going to get it done by, actually, this Thursday now, but they're working on it. I just need this resolution to the council so I can include it in the grant application, and if everything kind of falls together, we'll have a grant to submit to the DNR for this, for the bridge on by through the day. I move to approve.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing out all the favors, if you can say aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number nine is stolen hedge enterprises contract, which is in our pack, and that's a rental inspection services agreement. Stolen hedge enterprises, Silk Lawson, who had a contract with him, that last year, you know. Don, do you want to speak for him?
Yeah, so the, this is, the, the only thing that's changed between the language in the last couple of contracts we've had with them now, and this one is the dates of implementation. And then, and then also, outside of the rental application inspection process, there's a portion of this document that deals with if the city needs him to come in and do a, an inspection because of poor conditions that are property weather, but it's not, has nothing to do with the actual rental licensing process. It's the city requesting him to do some inspection work. That rate went from a hundred dollars an hour to a hundred and fifty in this one. So, it did go up fifty dollars. But, in all the years we've been using Sid for rental inspection, you've never had to use that. So, we don't foresee any reason to have to do that either. Another example might be if there's a house that, that needs to be condemned or something, and we report from him to inspect it, you know, that type of a situation, but we haven't, we haven't really done much of that either, so, at this point. And then, and the only other thing is just kind of a FYI, too. Even, in all of his agreements, there's a standard rate that he charges to do the inspections prior to the end of the year. And then after the, in the second part of December, he takes time off at the end of the year, like we all do for the holidays, and he, then if he needs to, he comes back after January one and continues any inspections that did not get their stuff done prior to the end of the year. Everybody's supposed to get them done by the end of the year. So, he'll come back and he'll do work in January, February, March, if he needs to, get them all done. And each of those months, after the deadline, his rate goes up for those, which is kind of an encouragement for all these landlords to get their rental inspection done by the end of the year, because every month after that, not only is their rate fees and things that the city involved to do not done, but he also charges a little bit more for each one of them. Those rates did not go up. That's all stayed the same. So, I guess in light of that, I recommend the council approve it.
I move to approve since.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing out all the favors, if you can say aye.
Aye.
All the same? Motion carried. Item number ten is draft economic development director job description review, which is a copy of our packet this evening. Don?
Yes. So, part of the process of trying to get this position filled and ready to post this job is this, this position description, which we have to all employees. And so, I got samples from various other communities, Barnesville, Perm, and they, in some, in some respects, they do, they all kind of do things a little bit differently. Perm's pretty close, but Barnesville, their economic development director is, and their EDA and the etc. completely different. And so, that person also has their EDA, but we're not structured that way. And so, taking all these little bits and pieces, what I did was I put together what I thought a economic development position would look like in Pelican Rapids, and what in my mind I had for this person to be involved in. And so, what I want to do is kind of, I want to go through especially the, the, each one of the essential functions, in order in paragraphs. I'm not going to read them necessarily in complete detail, but just to fill it out there, because here you're saying it may kind of spark an interest or a thought. In the first, in this first one, blow it up a little bit. But in this first one, I already kind of had thought about some changes, because part of this is referenced in another department. I just kind of was reviewing this before the council meeting and saw it. But, I want to revise this first one a little bit, just to basically, what I want to say here is manages and supervises economic development and housing programs to achieve goals within available resources, plans and organizes workloads, reviews progress and directs changes as, as needed. And the reason I'm taking out operations is because we don't have an HRA that actually administers housing operations, so to speak. And also, this person, I didn't catch it before, but this person isn't going to basically assign, have staff underneath them, assigning staff. There may be time when they have staff maybe working on something for them, working with Danielle, whatever, but they're not going to be, have staff assigned, they're not going to be doing training, you know, that, evaluating that type of thing. So, those things I was going to pull out of here. And if you want to see a better version of it, you could do that the next meeting, but it was just to kind of clean this one up. But then, going on from there to the second one, provides leadership and direction in development of short, long range plans and projects. Gathered information as it relates to economic development. Next one, works with city clerk slash treasurer to maintain any loan funds, maintain loan files, shares collection, et cetera, et cetera. Because if this person is basically going to be working on economic development as it relates to housing, or putting an infrastructure for housing, wherever the case may be, or maybe even, even working with the county and HRA with, with establishing or getting small city development grants, that, that, this position will also kind of work with them and, and, and kind of manage those loans. Right now, Danielle and I do, when we have the small city loans. Danielle's the one that keeps track of it all, sends checks out, but also this person would kind of just make sure that the, you know, if nothing else, making sure that that person and, and Danielle are on the same page as to how much money is in there, so when he's out there talking to small businesses, he or she is out there talking to small businesses, they know what kind of money they have to work with. Next one, developing carries out a marketing program for the industrial park and other city appropriate, or appropriate city and EDA properties. Anything that city owns, that, that, that we have for profit, they would be out there just kind of market that kind of to figure out, in a sense, act as a realtor or whatnot, just to get rid of the property, so it won't have to be a realtor anymore. Next one makes private and, and public presentations. Supervise the boards, commissions, city council, civic groups, general public, etc. You want this person to be out there talking to people, making presentations as it relates to long-term, short-term plans, any economic development related stuff. This person would also be potentially, you know, we're trying to do a new pool, that's economic development related. They might be, instead of Amy sitting here testifying before the legislature, maybe it might be this person, this person in the mayor, this person in the city administrator. If it's economic development related, they would be involved in it. Feature regularly with local businesses and carries out ongoing business retention, expansion and development programs targeted to, etc., etc. Identifies available resources and information to assist local businesses in obtaining financing from conventional lenders, SBA, D, West Central Initiative, USBA. So, in a nutshell, it's, it's being familiar with that network, those programs, and how to administer those programs or work with businesses to, to apply for those programs. Not necessarily doing your work for them or figuring out marketing plans or, or, you know, you know, doing applications, but making sure that they know the connections with them, small businesses, so that they can get that done. Development maintains ongoing and effective working relationship with economic development for professionals, chamber of congress, private lenders. Again, kind of working with businesses, but having that connection with, especially our chamber and, and our, our banking, especially, because our banks in Pelican Rapids administer USBA loan programs. Knowing about them programs, having that sit down with them bankers to make sure that everybody's getting that information out in their business community. Assures that the assigned areas of responsibility are performed within budgets, so they'll kind of work with, with the city administration, as well as the city council, to put together, you know, a budget for this position. Have input, just like the other department had to do. They have budgets and they try and control and stay within those budgets. This person will have any budget to work on it also. Represent the city on various boards, commissions, committees, relating track on development and housing, and local regional favor. So, they might be a reason for them to, to, to set in and, and represent the city at the CBA meetings. I, I sit right now in, in a community update meeting every, every, every month, or not, it's going to quarterly, with, with the Art of County CBA. So, they'd be setting in on that type of thing. And then provide regular reports and information to the city administrator, city council, EDA board members, etc., etc. So, these are the, the major things. And then there's always the catchall under other responsibilities. Performs other duties and assumes additional responsibility that are directed by the city administrator. So, if there's something, or the city council, if there's something in the city council, or I see that they could, they could be working on, I might basically, you know, push it in that direction, too. But this is the, the majority of what I've, of what I've come up with, and it tries to, tries to encompass all things economic development. So, when you look at the education level that we're looking at, basically a bachelor's degree. Most people that are in this field are, are going to probably have a bachelor's degree from a college or university with a degree in economic development, you know, planning, business administration, financial related field, with three years' experience in community or economic development, housing or HUD work, planning and zoning, real estate or business development. So, some experience would be wonderful, also, three years' experience, so that they've been, you know, kind of on a minimum site. And then any equivalent combination of education related work. So, if somebody comes in, they don't have that degree, but they do have a whole load of experience doing exactly what this document is trying to find. And then obviously, necessary knowledge, skills and abilities. We'd like to find somebody that's experienced in banking, real estate or entrepreneurship, some knowledge of commercial lending, property acquisition, sales of business plans, or planning. Not that they have to do that, but just they're familiar with it. Knowledge of economic development or housing methods. See, experiencing, experience when you serve the preparing and administering grants. Not that they have to write all the grants, but at least if you're reviewing one, you know, kind of have some idea of when, you know, what's good, what's not good. But, in a lot of cases, when we're doing grants, we've been writing them on the pool, obviously, on the bridge, but when you're talking about some of the big things, huge things that relate to housing, economic development, that type of thing, wouldn't it likely we're going to either solve them, write those types of grants, but having some background and input would be, would be nice. And then, obviously, the ability to communicate effectively what on and why this person will be doing presentations, they'll be doing, you know, written communication with different agencies, that type of thing, too, is very important to that. Overall, this is, this is kind of what I come up with. Any comments, questions? You see something you don't like, you think there's something missing. The one thing, well, Steve, the one thing that I've seen, but I did put it in here, it's in kind of David's box, which should be some reference to, this position, obviously, there's a lot of daytime, much like, like my position, there's a lot of daytime, but there's also night meetings, and they could be numerous, because if we want him to, to, you know, or, you know, if we want this person to, to have that connection with the chamber of congress, not that he has to attend, not that they have to attend every con, chamber meeting, but it should be nice if they went to some. If, if there's another retail group that meets from time to time, but they do it early in the morning, that night, to attend those. Council meetings, obviously, EDA meetings, obviously, and all after hours. So, I thought about, you know, potentially laying out someplace in the, in the, you know, physical demands and work environment that, you know, they are, there are going to be night meetings. And there might be some reference to any of your, but it was more, I don't think I called it as, as well as some of the others.
This all looks, I think, pretty good. But, when you contacted like Perm and Barnesville and other towns, which one did you think was, had the most successful economic development person in?
Well, I think. Well, I think...
Which and why?
Well, I think, I think Barnesville and Perm do. And I think the one, one reason is because they've had somebody full-time on staff doing this stuff for a long time, so they really have that, that knowledge and that network. They built that network up, they know who to call, what to call them for, and when to call them, type of thing. Barnesville obviously has been, you think of Barnesville and you wonder why Barnesville hasn't with, with having that person over there for as long as they've had it. I mean, they've got some good things over in Barnesville with their housing development and subdivisions and stuff, but, and their downtown, they've done a lot of things with the small cities grant. From the small cities development downtown side of things, I think we've probably can say we've been comparable with the two billion dollars we've gotten allocated to some extent. They've done better in housing, but then they've got that full-time person doing it. I think one that downfall is the Barnesville, it's too close to the part of Warren. And I think that has an effect on, Perm on the, on the flip side of it, Perm's had that person for a long time and just, you know, I think twenty years ago, Perm Pelican Rapids population acted as probably pretty close to a long the same. And, and now there's no comparison, because, because I think, I don't know how long Perm's had that full-time economic development position, but having that person active as they have been, and also it's more than just that, I mean, they've also got a, a community of business owners and everything else that are highly qualified. But that's all built up over a period of time. So I think just that, having that person in Perm for as long as they have, as long as they have, and because of the relationships and obviously being into some of the, well, one major of the sort, but all of them to some extent have a, that made a difference. So, you know, so when I looked at what Barnesville, a lot of what's in here is what Barnesville and Perm have, because I think especially Perm, Perm's close, more closer to the way to how we're looking to use one than Barnesville, because like I said, we're not looking for somebody to head up and run the EDA or an HRA, we're looking for somebody that basically has a little bit of everything, if they, if they're working on something that we think, okay, I need to get the EDA involved, because I have a project that the EDA can be a part of funding or being part of, they bring it to the EDA, that's what they need to do as the EDA. But that's, that's kind of the way it works in Perm, for now. I hope I answered your question without, without...
I answered it, great. Don, I studied this and we've covered everything, and that would be about a hundred hours a week for it.
And then you could take the fax machine off, those are my comments. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have one, but we try not to have people use it.
Is there any value in...
Okay, I'll pay back if you want.
We've just spent the better part of the year developing a comprehensive plan, that's not mentioned anywhere in there as a resource. Is there any value in putting that, if they're working within a comprehensive plan, or?
I, I think that's in with them, or... Yeah, I think that's basically, that's just kind of part of it. The comprehensive plan is basically the plan to the planning commission, for the council, for everybody, as they work on, on, you know, within the scope of their job, within the city, it's all kind of directed by comprehensive plan. I think the comprehensive plan is, is a tool for this person, working with the planning commission, to look at what they want to try and accomplish from an economic development standpoint, but I'm just trying to know that it needs to be, just trying to mention it in here? I mean, it can, I, there's, there's... It could, it could be something that's actually referenced, you know, I could just mention, make mention of the comprehensive plan, potentially in this one. Provides leadership and direction in development, short and long-term plans and projects that I somehow mentioned, using comprehensive kind of business.
I guess I don't know, is there any value in doing that or that? Would limit them to, okay, I have to work within the comprehensive plan?
I, yeah, and, you know, also when I was looking through all these other documents, I did not see the word comprehensive plan in it. And Steve, to address your question, there's a lot of stuff in here, and if he was to work on every bit of this, it would be a hundred hours a week. But just like if you looked at my job description or Danielle's job description, we're all be working on it. You can choose when you're going to be able to work on this stuff and be effective, and that's, that's, that's the whole thing about it. You want to make sure that they're, they're, they can pay a busy for an ADR pay period, but you also, they also realize that, you know, this week they might be working on this, and is a lot of it's going to be what, what areas they basically are spending a lot of time on any certain time, is dependent upon the project they might be working, or the network they might have, or the people they're trying to meet. He might be, they might spend a forty hour week just going out there and meeting with people in different cities and organizations and agencies, and we might only see them for two, three days, so.
I moved out, Don, to the tweets you talked about. Now, I almost did it out there, I don't know, we could spend a lot of time, but let's see what's out there.
That's a good point.
Motion second.
Daniel, did you get one of them?
Didn't you think it was important that you were talking about the schedule, you know, that their meetings, if you're not going to have, it's not nine to five, it might be six o'clock, breakfast meeting, or seven thirty evening, favor.
Yeah, I'll add something regarding, you know, kind of the hours type thing, under physical demands and work environment.
Okay, we do have the motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Barry, not all favorites, so I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Opened in, motion carries.
Okay, and just you mentioned the timeline, so just to kind of update the council, this, this base, I'll make these tweaks, this is the job description completed. I've also got, we're required to have supplemental document, application documents that relate to veteran preference for all of our positions, and we pretty much do for all of our positions, but this one I haven't and yet completed at all. And one reason I haven't is because them supplemental documents are really based off of the job description. So I did kind of start looking at it and working on it a little bit, but I still have to get that done before we can basically start looking for applications. And so that needs to get done. The posting, job posting, I already have done. We also need to find the office set for this individual. Where are we going to put it? I need a desk, I need a computer, I need a cellphone, I need a, you know, so I still got to kind of define that area, or find that area in this building, if it's going to be in this building, and I'm open for suggesting. The one area that I thought about that's probably going to be the area initially anyway, is up here in this office that's right off the entryway, that's where Mayor Fraser's office was when he was the utility supervisor. So it can be set up, it's not a really big place, but it would definitely house somebody with a desk, a phone, and, and a place to meet people. It can get a little loud in the entryway if you find a turn, but not very often. And if they needed to hold meetings with other people, obviously we could figure out something else, you know, I've got that, that space in my office, I can, you know, I'm sure I could find things to do outside my office, a couple hours if he needed to meet in there, or whatever. But...
Well, there's just a story to come.
Um, I, what else upstairs? You can't, you can't have, he couldn't have a kind of a meeting where he was meeting a group of people or whatever up there. The downs, at different times, the downstairs would work, the mayor does it now, you know, so that could be, that could be kind of of any form, the whole meetings, if he needed the whole meetings, if he wanted to, you know, meet with EDC for instance, or something like that, they could arrange to meet down there, that type of thing. So that, that was my thoughts on whether housing probably makes the most sense for now, to get this going. So my thinking is, get all the documentation finished up, and get it all that done, and hopefully be able to post for the job, so that by the end of June, we hopefully be able to look at making the recommendation, June or beginning of July, make the recommendation to council. And then that person, depending on how it all lays out, hopefully maybe even sooner than that, but, you know, depending on who applies and their notes for their work, whatever they're working on, but then hopefully have somebody in place sometime in, towards the end of June or July. And with that, I think, the other thing I'm trying to continue to establish too, that interviewing community, Councilman Strand obviously is a part of that, Amy Dolan is going to sit on it, the Otto County Union Development Authority, and she has a, obviously a background in economic development, so I'm still looking for a couple of the suggestions or, or plots. I think it'd be nice to potentially maybe include somebody from the chamber, maybe you know, or some business owner that's willing to do it, has the time to do it, because when we, if we get a lot of applications, this could be very time consuming, because most of the interviews will be over, not all of them, it'll be during the day. And when we do interviews currently, depending on the applicants and the job they're looking to fill, we're going to interview two days straight, like all of them, so. So I still have to find a couple more people. I could take another one to fish, or somebody like Watson, but I don't know if Watson's good, but I should go with Watson.
Okay, any other questions for Don?
Warren, maybe somebody from West Central first, maybe?
I can think of somebody who feels a little bit official.
Well, you know, yeah, I, I have, I have a couple ideas too, but, you know, somebody that I know has been involved in economic development and with a business owner in council, you know, we talk to them to maybe participate in. And then once I do find a couple of people, I will bring down this to the council and have the council go officially, I think, structure this up, maybe.
Okay, thank you, Don. Item number eleven is trail plan consideration, which is in our packet of request for proposals for consulting services to trail plan.
Correct, so I guess I'm up again. Yeah. So this is the draft of the, the proposal for consulting services to the trail plan, and this was based on the council approving or agreeing to do this, Partnership for Health was here, and had, had proposed to the council that they would be willing to fund the city hiring a consultant to do a trail plan. And in their document to the city council, there was some things they wanted to see in the trail plan, and in order for us to put, in order for us to take what they gave the city and go out and find a consultant, I wanted to, I thought we needed to, I think they might have been referencing an RFP, but I wanted to put together an RFP that clearly states what the city is looking for. So that's what this does. It, under the scope of work and stuff, there's general information, the one thing I want to change on this is I think I'm just going to, instead of just, I was trying to figure out how to describe where Pelican was, and I just, I saw someplace that, you know, sixteen miles south of Detroit Lakes on US fifty-nine, so I thought I'd just left that there, but after, especially with the mayor, I think I'm going to just change that to say is located between Pelican, uh, Detroit Lakes and Ferguson Falls, Minnesota, on US fifty-nine, give me general, a little bit better script for where we're at, but the rest of it, unless you guys have a comment, I'll use the same. But the scope of work really clarifies what it is that Partnership for Health was looking for, and what we're looking to do with this. And so if, if, the consultant basically will work with the city-appointed trail plan advisory committee, so we do have to put an advisory committee together, and then they would work with that, that person, they would at least have one public input meeting, so that they're taking work that the committee has done, and get input from the public on what they're doing. There could be more than one meeting if the city and the consultant perceive there's a need to do that, but the trail plan would cover these five topics, future trails and connections within the city, taking all the things that we've already kind of done with the bike and pet plan, and, and whatever else can kind of tie it all into one, future trails and connections, future trails and connections to Pelican and neighboring communities, especially as it relates to maybe Maplewood State Park Trail, getting down to that trail, you know, the trailhead in Pelican. They also, in the bike and pet plan, showed maybe a small trail or a long, or maybe a loop around Prairie Lake, kind of diamond, a concept plan for future amenities to the new trailhead for the Pelican Rapids, Pelican Trail, and then a boardwalk river lot along the Pelican River, once the dam is all done, that could be included in this, as part of our, our trail system, and then include kayak, canoe and kayak access to and along the river. So that's kind of what we're looking to get out of this plan as a whole, and then at the end of it all, it will present this by the twenty-seventh of, of September, it will provide a minimum to include national recommendations for these five things that's involved. So I did, after I got this thing done, I did send it down, since I wanted to make sure, since there was, you know, this was being funded by Partnership for Health, that they were clear with what we were trying to accomplish, and that was kind of what they saw as doing with the money that they were going to provide us. And so they looked over and they thought it was fine, and also. So any questions, comments, suggestions? The timeline for this thing then, basically, and the selection process and how we're going to go about picking the firms that we've sent it out to is all identified in here. My goal is to send this out by Friday to, to the firms that we're going to send it to, with a deadline of, of receiving it and getting back by the fifteenth. And if we plan on, you know, a lot of these things we plan on, if we want to interview, if we do send it out more than one, and we get proposals back, if we want to do any interviews, we would do those on Friday the twenty-second, and then come to the recommendation to the city council of April twenty-sixth, April twenty-sixth, I believe? And then kind of just talks about evaluation process. Now, who we send this to is totally up, uh, they're not, they're not suggesting, they're recommending we send it to anybody. So that's totally up to the city Pelican Rapids, we could send it to one consulting firm that we think would do the work, or a couple of them, three or five, or whatever. I do, I would like to have, again, a, a councilman to basically sit on this list and to evaluate the proposals that come in, so I have more of a, I guess, more than just my recommendation, but it would be more of a couple of people making a recommendation to the council. You have a list of people, companies that you're going to send? No, no, I know that SRF, right?
Yeah.
SRF has done a lot of the county planning, Apex has done a lot of the city planning, they were involved, maybe they're safe off the school plan when we hit the third plan, which by the way, we're going to be doing another, I mean, they get funded for that, but that's work, they do that differently now, and they're working through West Central Initiative with the school, they'll be establishing a community, so, you know, Apex is capable. I was also, when this was, just for full disclosure, when this was talked about at the council meeting, when Partnership for Health was here, there was somebody out in the basement that used to be a, involved with NDSU and had somehow worked on trail planning or whatever through the extension service somewhere, not that it was on a national level or state level or whatever, but they reached out through... level or state level or whatever, but they reached out to me too and asked if they could get a proposal. So, you know, those are the only three I have thought about, but whether it has to be that broad or not.
So Don, are you looking for two motions here?
Um, I would, I would like a motion on the RFP based on, you know, the one change I wanted to make, the beginning paragraph regarding where it was located. So one motion on this, and then if somebody could sit on the committee.
I'm going to approve the request for proposals for consulting services to the trail plan. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Discussion?
Does that give it a lot of time? I'll talk for 13 minutes.
You know, if I can get it out on, well, let me ask. If I throw this back, you don't.
Right. Before first, would you be able to get something back in two weeks?
It's never, it's never enough time, right? No, I mean, I guess the question is, is how detailed, what are you all looking for here? I mean, if you're looking for a really elaborate document, I didn't see anywhere in there where you had any stipulations on the number of pages, exactly what you're looking for.
There is though, there is. Yeah, there is, as far as the number, scope of work, fine. Let's see, ten, after we see 10 pages, including also putting down.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, it's enough, yeah, it's enough time. I mean, we'll get it, we'll get it done. So I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate the comment though.
Any more discussion? Carry it out in all favor, signify the same. Aye. Full to say, more to carry. And we're looking for a volunteer to sit on the subcommittee.
This would really be a short one, because it's really just once and things come in, sit down and work through.
Once and done.
I would say once and done.
Any volunteers?
Well, it's on a Friday, I specifically picked Friday for a reading.
Usually gotta work it all on.
I think it would be, definitely be wanted done, unless for some reason we want to actually have a face-to-face discussion with them, and we want to take advantage of that following week after we did the proposal to do an interview. We, we had this in another proposal once before, and we never did it, because we didn't see a need to, so it would be something that we would determine if the need is there based on how many proposals we get. So the answer to your question may be.
Very busy, very busy. We're seeing volunteers.
If not, I'll do it myself, but I'm.
The volunteer? Would someone like?
All in gold?
Yeah. Would someone like?
Non-mated.
Third second?
It's probably better.
Fourth and second, non-mated, Kevin Ballard, the subcommittee. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Carry it out in all favor, I will say aye. Full to say, more to carry. Thank you, Kevin.
This means all I knew.
What I've done. Item number 12 is FYI, Park Board Minister, packet, any comments on this? If not, item number 13, Administrator Report, Don.
Can you skip right over to the department? Oh, that's what it is. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, since the last meeting, we had a department head meeting, we're going to try to put all this stuff together. It's interesting, because we're already working on the next one, so we're always ahead of the council meetings on the next agenda. Completed the draft, RFP for the trail plan that you guys just approved, working on the economic development position, job description, and interview questions, by the way. That was another thing that I've been working very hard at. I've got to comment on that. But I attended the monthly Mid-2024 Project Virtual Meeting, I attended a virtual meeting in the Otterville Counties Community Development, according to the community updates that we do. Also, I worked with Otterville County Wayne, Out of the Wayne Stein. I had, I don't know if I kind of mentioned, I don't know much you guys know about this, but all that 60 acres up there that we got from tax forfeiture back in the 60s? No, 90, 90 treatment. That's, that's use restricted. The city got that applied by a solid from the wastewater plant. And so that's how we got it, it was for public purpose. When you get tax forfeited land, it's got to be a public purpose. So that's, they conveyed it to us for that reason. And I was looking through something somewhere, and I realized that after a certain amount of time, that land, that use restriction could be lifted. And so when I saw it, I contacted, I dug up some state statutes, but I also contacted County Auditor Wayne Stein and talked to him about it. And I said, based on what I'm seeing, that land can be now released to the city to be used for anything it wants to use it for. And I said, based on what I'm reading, I think it's January of 2023, and I'm trying to be proactive, because we're talking to the developer, and Wayne Stein actually did some research and got back to me, he said, no, it's actually January 2022, which is two months ago. So I said, okay, what do we need to do then? And he said, all we need to do is, I need, he said, as the auditor, I just need to do a resolution, get it through the county commissioners, and then get it recorded, and it'll be done. And so they, he did that, the last county commissioner meeting, they passed that resolution, and so that will be recorded. When it's all done, said and done, all eventually the city will be a document that says that's no longer, it's now city land, state's out of it, all, all the use restrictions are now lifted, so.
That's a quick. Where does that come? Pardon? Where does that?
It's all the city land, and we're talking about offensive development, all that stuff was still, and that's why I was talking with him when I saw that, because we were going to have to start actually, what, what we had to do with the apartment building was the city had to convey that land back to the state, ask the state to give it back to the city for housing, and there's something in the statutes that allows it for housing purposes. But I wanted to get it totally used, the use restrictions lifted, so say, we don't want to do housing, we want to do industrial out there, whatever, we wouldn't have to worry about this anymore. So now it's going to be clean and clear and it's going to be. I worked on the, me and our officer, for the bridge. One of the things that you'll, that you noticed when we were talking to Skip was he didn't freeze when he was talking, remember? Notice how we've done that in the past, especially in the video too. I had Life Company Service call-out come in, and we are wired now, one of these PCs for the zooming, so we shouldn't have any of that island or that freezing up anymore. So I worked on that. Also, I had some conversations with Sight on Sound about this room and getting this room set up. Again, we've been wanting to get this set up for, for live streaming, and also we need to get the mics, even though that's kind of working, it's still, at times, depending on if you guys are using the audio off the voices, it's, it's hard for individuals or people that are listening to council meeting on Wednesdays to hear what's being said without turning up the volume and turning it back down. And it really depends too, if somebody's whispering or talking out there while you guys are talking, because that's the only link we have. So Sight on Sound is hoping to get ahold of me next week and run over here and take a look at it. My thoughts are, we've had some discussion about this, and you guys want to be looking into iPads and that type of thing, and maybe that's still the role we need to look at doing. But as far as miking, instead of having mics in front of everyone, if you want you guys, I'd like to get rid of that one too. And I have them looking at actually putting drop mics in certain areas coming off the ceiling to catch all the conversations in the room. I'll also be looking at a camera, because that one's not going to do YouTube Live, looking at a camera system, setting it all up. My, my thought was, what's the best way, this is still a little bit of how we can do this, for the council, because I envision if that camera's over here, that this screen possibly is going to have to launch in that wall. For the, for everybody, and then we can set these chairs straight, and people can just look over there and see what's on the screen, and that camera can zoom in on the screen. But for the sake of the council, I thought, because we've already talked about these iPads, the mini iPad, but in order for you guys to see what's on the screen, you either look at it there, or you have to connect up with your iPads when you, when you council meet. Is that still the route you want to go? Because I think it's perm is set up to where there is a monitor, about 21-inch monitor in front of everyone, and what they're showing on the screen is on the monitor. And if you've noticed tonight, you know, a lot of times you guys are going through your packets, and that's what you use your tablets for, but one of the things I was trying to do, I was sitting on work tonight, is I am showing the packet in that, that figured document in the packet as I go, and maybe that's a better way of doing it, but do you guys still want the iPads? Or does a 21-inch monitor sitting in front of you that shows everything on the screen make sense? Or both? The one thing about how we set this room up, which we'll be talking about the next council meeting, is the American Rescue Fund out, that we have to hold getting the packets in the mailroom. Well, that's the discussion, you know, we have to have, because that was one of the reasons for the tablets was for, for being able to get the packets and view the packets when you're here at the meeting, some of you are there and some of you aren't. Third, I think when you were bringing yours, you were actually logging into Zoom, so you kind of did it differently. And yeah, it would kind of, I think it would be a negative to have to go back and printing up packets, especially when sometimes you've got 100 sheets in the packet, you do a long copy of the packet. So it'd be nice to stick with the technology for that reason. So maybe from that standpoint, even if we have a monitor up there for the people to, the attending meeting to see, as well as the people on Zoom, we'd still be able to see it. You know, maybe we might have to add, I don't know if that would be enough, or if we have to add another monitor for the people to be able to view, I don't know. But just maybe some thought or input from the council. The monitors, with, my mind, the monitors would be showing the same thing that would be on the big screen up there, Green Street, would be showing the monitor, so you could put that stuff right there. And that might be more of what's on Zoom and stuff too, and the need for iPads for you guys, so we wouldn't have to start printing out a ton of the packets.
Why is it 21-inch monitor?
I just do it on that side.
I don't care. I don't think we would need, like I think else, kind of over community, silly to have a monitor of any size here while I'm sitting here in my iPad scrolling through the pack, any or through the packet anywhere.
I agree with you, but y'all don't use the tablets now, so if we get everybody iPad, what's going to change? Is anything missing? I mean, if you're all bringing them in and using them, yeah, then.
You do use your computer.
No.
I use a paper, I like paper.
I know.
I might be able to scroll through it while I was here, and run back and check on a couple of, when I have a question in my head, rather than asking a question, than having the whole screen move back. Oftentimes, we just scroll back, look at what I thought, oh, okay, and then get it back up and.
Okay.
I mean, I do like that.
Yeah.
Do I need it?
Well, it might be, that might be the way, both of them, because you're used to doing a tally or whatever, to stay away from paper, maybe it would be better if they'll just go the iPad route, and then just have the monitor for, on the wall or whatever. This is just cumbersome, because I kind of, so you guys can see it, but a lot of times it's too small, you can't see it, and I can't aim it for anybody out there for both to see it. So if that's up on the wall, you know, Steve's going to have to get a neck aid looking over that way if he's going to do something else, but, but it's still the possibility of being too small. So having something that you guys use in front of you that you can size or whatever, the iPad would be ideal for that. But.
Those monitors, you're speaking of, the gym monitors, that would just mimic that, right?
It would just mimic that. So you kind of all kind of, not really the monitor, no.
I guess, to me, it's, if we're going to keep our tablet or iPad or whatever, to get our packets, so we don't have to send them by mail. And just if there was money to have additional.
Okay.
Five monitors sitting here, so that we can look at the same things there or.
Okay. I'll forget the idea of all monitors, we'll still stay with the iPad, but the most important thing I wanted to mention to you is that they're going to try and get over here next week and look at to see if they're, you know, what their recommendation. His idea was to come and have a conversation about what we wanted to set up, and then price it out and give us a proposal to do it. And then, like I said, that ERP money can be used for that, and I'll be talking more about that the next, the next meeting, because there's some things that we need to do before the end of April that affects that knowledge, so. Boy, that was way too long. I attended a city utilities meeting for the 2024 Broad Project with Bob Schleyman and Ryan Olson, and it had to do with just the utility, our utility aspect of it, not the service improvement stuff. I, I attended a virtual meeting with the US Treasury Department regarding ERP funds that we'll be talking about the next week. Met with the mayor and West Central Turkeys to discuss various topics from housing to PFAS to cholides, the cholides. I finally had a virtual cross-share meeting on the 2024 Project with Defense Engineering and Mid-Do, to get a better idea, I think they threw a number out there at one point, and so we kind of wanted to get a better, have a meeting a little bit, because some of the things we wanted, that we didn't have certification on was how we pay our portion of it, because that was a little bit of the discussion. And I'm going to be talking with our financial advisor on Thursday regarding all of our projects in town, and try and wrap my head around a little bit more about how we can and cannot do some of this stuff. And I'll take the opportunity right now to tell you all that we did not pick that targeted community 1.5 million dollar grant, we did not, so where that puts the pool, I'm not sure at this point. I also posted a position for a full-time police officer, and also, we had applied for the AS2S, it's called AS2S, that's a consulting firm, utility survey, we've done them every year for a series of years back from 2013, 12, we started it, and then we missed a year or so, and I just got notice that that survey was opened up again, so without having the utility department usually know this for us, I, I put that survey together and submitted that. So we're beginning, we weren't, because Pelican Rapids wasn't put in the book this last time, I know I shared some information when we were looking at utility rates on that, but we weren't in there at the last go-around, but we'll be in the next one, so we'll be able to see Pelican Rapids name in there, you know, where we sit with everybody else with other utilities, we create these types of stuff, so. That's all. Any questions? Thank you, Don.
Item number 14, Mayor reported a few items, hold them down, as I was reading, I met with Library Board Chairman Wayne Runnig regarding the City of Pelican Rapids ordinance, mandating the Pelican Rapids City code of defining compensation for purposes of library employees. Attended and testified at the Otterville County Commissioners Meeting regarding that resolution 2022, City of Pelican Rapids use restriction release on the acreage in the northwest portion of the city, which was passed by unanimous vote. Attended the 2024 Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Project Open House at Calgary Evangelical Free Church on March 15th, then on March 17th with the family from the Ukraine and welcomed them into our community. Met with the city administrator Solga, and then we were at the West Central Turkeys to discuss what Don talked about, housing, PFAS and cholides. Met with the administrator Solga yesterday to review the council meeting for this afternoon. And then I met by a team with administrator Solga, street superintendent Olson, personnel from Apex Engineering, K L J Engineering in Mid-Do, regarding the 2024 Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Project. Any questions?
Who was the result of your meeting with the library?
We just talked about what we, what we passed that resolution of the library, on the library board, the results?
Yeah, what was?
Don, do you want to?
Well, actually, I don't know if you're referring to this or not, but we got the Attorney General's opinion back.
That's going to be on, that's going to be on the.
That's gonna be on the agenda.
That'll be on the agenda next.
And that, that Attorney General's opinion was, when I got it from Lindsay, she emailed to me, she said she was gonna email, they got her because that's what she heard that night. And I replied to her and I said, send it to the library board. So, I'm assuming that she sent it to the whole board and so I would expect it to next week. And it'll be in the packet, the next packet. And I assume that somebody can log it to board and that's how we work to be a part of that discussion.
Okay, see, no other business, simple question. April 7th I have it on my calendar as order review, is that okay? Yes, two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
And we don't have to be here for an hour. Daniel, do you want to explain that?
You only have to be here as long as we have city business.
Yeah.
And who recorded two of that?
Two of five.
On the 7th act two, and you. No, I just, I need a quorum and either Mark App or Freezer.
It's also the day of that housing meeting.
Yeah. They're both county meetings. The mayor and I are going to the housing. Yeah, I'm gonna leave that moving. Okay, see, no other business on this evening, motion for adjournment, second? Motion second, all in favor, signify the same, aye? Vote for same? Me, you, or you're gonna be.
You're gonna be due, you want to be back by two?
I'll be back tomorrow.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna be able to make it. I just know today I was gonna be about half day or something. Someone's validating, so I will.